I'd like to call this regular City Council of September 3rd to order. Would you please call the rule?
Kuz?
Here.
Gage?
Here.
Bergeron?
Aye, are here.
Flora?
Here.
Zingy?
Here.
Chapel?
Here.
Kifer? Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public hearing on Resolution Number 20-2788, amending the 2020 General Government Operating in Capital Budget to provide supplemental appropriations for the Fire Department in the amount of $32,169, and the Heartbreak Department in the amount of $424,786. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that, move on into Communications. Today, we have a proclamation in regards to National Recovery Month. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of our health and overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental health and substance use disorder works, treatment is effective and people recover in Ketchikan community and around the nation; whereas preventing and overcoming mental health and substance use disorder is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally; and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends and people with mental or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of problems, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment recovery support services; and whereas every day, someone's life is directly affected by untreated mental health and substance use disorders, whereby death, or overdose, or dysfunction of quality of life; and whereas citizens in the community of Ketchikan are affected by these conditions, as suicide is an epidemic that can be prevented. And whereas to help more people achieve and stay in long-term recovery, the City Council, along with the federal and state agencies, invite all residents of Ketchikan to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert Severson, Mayor of the City of Ketchikan, Alaska, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as National Recovery Month, and call upon the citizens of Ketchikan community to observe the month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies to support National Recovery Month, including Stop the Stigma Recovery March and Resource Rally on Saturday, September 26, 2020. Signed this third day of September, Robert Severson. Is somebody here to receive that?
Just gonna say a quick thing here. I have behind me a whole team of people because things like Stop the Stigma don't happen just with one person alone. But I wanted to say National Recovery Month is important to me because I am a member of recovery. I'm a member of my community again, a mother, a sister, a daughter again, and without sobriety and recovery, these things would not be possible. I really appreciate our City Council recognizing September as National Recovery Month because the more we talk about these issues, the more we can stop the stigma around substance use and mental health disorders. The more we talk about these issues, the more we can shed the shame that these disorders hold on people. And the more that we talk about it, the less people will feel alone, and then maybe we can make some progress. And if we can continue to make progress, then maybe, just maybe, we can save one life. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That brings us down to persons to be heard. We have a number of people that are signed up. We do have a three-minute limit. The clerk will call the names and keep track of the time. She will give you a bing with about a half-minute to go so you can get a chance to wrap it up. So, Madam Clerk, who's the first on our list?
Martin Peel.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Martin Peel. I've been a resident for 58 years. My background from which I want to talk to you. I'm a former CPA. Worked for Ketchikan Pulp in management 32 years, where I was president from '87 to '94. Served on a statewide bank, as a statewide bank director, from '71 to 2000. Was acting Executive Director of the Alaska Permanent Fund for a period of time. Served on the Alaska Retirement Management Board for 12 years. And have been a board member of a locally-based insurance company for 33 years, most years as chairman. I only say this to show that I've had some experience in both private and government management. That is primarily what I'm here to talk about. Before I get into that, I'd like to make three points. I want to first make it very clear that I am totally opposed to turning management of our ports over to anyone. I emphasize "anyone." If there's time, I would like to address quickly a few concerns I have about the RFP process and RFPs, as I've been able to learn. Three, I am surprised that more attention has not been given to the R Ports Group Committee Activity and Recommendations. It was backed by a very large number of signatures gathered in a short period of time. Now, there are three points I would like to emphasize on management control, along with my recommendation. First, to lay off or shed management of our ports is the wrong thing to do. It is fine to contract out some of the day-to-day activity, but do not lose control. I've seen this happen before, the results are not good. You lose financial control. Second, transparency is extremely important. By contracting out, you lose it in too many respects, particularly as to dollar flow coming in and also expenditures. Don't do this. Let me give you two examples of the importance of transparency. First, the Alaska Pipeline, where it was lacking. Here, in where the public share of a public resource being brought to market is being determined, had the State of Alaska had some, even small, ownership in the pipeline, there would have been transparency. Without it, led to disputes and litigation on pipeline tariffs. Here, Ketchikan owns the ports. The second one is here at home, Ketchikan Pulp Company, where there was good transparency. Here, when you contract to harvest a public resource, you agree to open your books to an annual audit and collection of all financial matters. This is total transparency. There were controls on your profit margin. Any good company will be happy to operate within the confines of a contract with you with good transparency. You should however expect any company to pursue maximum profit. When dealing with a public resource or facility, you must have transparency. Third, flexibility to change is extremely important. Contracting out for 20 or 30 years is too far too long to have your hands tied. While the environment we are in today is dire, we will get through it. But change will go on, and we must be able to adjust to it. My recommendations, number one, do not lose control and require transparency. Two, put in place an independent structure of an experienced qualified port manager, along with a port authority composed of qualified people in various aspects. This position and authority should be independent and report directly to the City Council. This is too important, that's how it's done successfully. As to a port director, create a good, high-paying job here in our community. Promote local hire. This can be done at a cost far, far below contracting out and paid for with port-generated funds. I do not know how many of you are experienced in running a business, but I think you should think long and hard before any decision to turn management and control of our ports over to anyone, particularly anyone outside our community. I want to emphasize again, control of the revenue side is too important. The stakes are high. The Ketchikan Council, the City Council, has the final say in control on how the ports are managed. It's entrusted to you. This is not a time to shed management or for weak management. I was told that not going the RFP route remains an option for you on behalf of Ketchikan's residents. I did learn Monday that in addition to the RFP, staff will be preparing a financial analysis of Ketchikan continuing to run the ports and enterprise fund. This will need to be reviewed and vetted too. Proper comparisons must be made before a decision is made. I'm sure the best result rests in Ketchikan continuing to run and manage its ports, and further will be able to adjust to changes. Any RFP proposal will be after the largest profit they can generate. Also be aware of what I call the carrot, the money upfront. They will reap a profit on it many times over, and you will not have control on how many times over. There are a few things about the port fund I'd like to note. $522,000 is paid to the city in lieu of property taxes. Divide this by the millage rate of 6.6, I hope that's right, means the city puts a value of about $84 million on the ports. This is an investment worth managing. The personal service budget is over $1.3 million. Are these positions going to be cut or eliminated? Politics is here to consider. But my strong feeling is that something's gonna happen if an outside RFP commitment is made. If I have time left, I'd like to just address a couple things on the RFP. Am I out of time?
Go ahead, Martin.
It is pretty obvious that the $35 million upfront requirement is an effort, and a questionable one, to circumvent the Tonys Clause. It would be far better to work with the cruise lines like Juno has. Anyone putting up money like that will expect to get a return on it, again, several times over. My opinion is that Surfer Point Holdings was forced to submit a RFP. Far better would it be to retain management and work with cruise line agencies. They are part of Ketchikan. They have clearly shown the expertise. Working together locally will bring the best results. And I mean everyone, including many other businesses in town, capable of the work to run and maintain the ports. Remember, Ketchikan is a highly preferred port destination, and the downtown location is it. Let's keep it that way. As needed, we can first expand Earth 3, three and a half million or something, and later, when needed, Earth 1's and 2. As to the outside RFP, from what I've seen, the outside proposal only addresses the expenditure side and like it is a savings to Ketchikan. That's not so. The expenditures don't change, except they need to be controlled locally. More important to the equation is the revenue side, which you will lose control of. Control of the revenue side is too important for many reasons, like ability to adjust as needed and remaining competitive. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Martin? Seeing and hearing none, thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council, for allowing me to allow Martin to finish his conversation. He had talked to me earlier, and I told him he should come and address the Council. Well, thank you. Next.
Ty Redkey.
Hello. Hello, Ty Redkey here with the PATH Homeless Shelter. I'm just really gonna keep it short. I'm here for any questions that you guys might have of me and my agency regarding new business item number A5, discussion regarding future of Ketchikan homeless shelters. If you do have any questions, I'll be right there.
Thank you, Ty.
Eltira Wilhelm, are you on the conference line?
Hello? Hi, Eltira Wilhelm. I'd like to thank you for letting me have some of your time here tonight. I'm a KI graduate in 2008, and I was part of the beginning formation of the skate park when I was a youth leader in 2006. And I got to skate at the park when it opened, after obviously, yes, many weeks to completion. So, in January, I was called upon to become the current Vice President of Ketchikan Youth Initiative. And I was happy to be able to serve my community that served me so well. I had the youth have experienced homelessness when I was 17, and I had community members and, you know, friends that took me in at that time. So, I am here tonight just to share a little bit about Ketchikan Youth Initiative in our, in the youth community center. I, in August, the Public Works Director contacted Ketchikan Youth Initiative to discuss the possibility of using the building for a winter warming shelter. Ketchikan Youth Initiative Board, we then discussed and deliberated for some time and made an offer, you know, to the city that's on the agenda tonight, you know, regarding the use of the building for a temporary homeless shelter. And so, what I, yeah, would like to share with you all tonight, like from my own experience as a youth in Ketchikan, and from listening to our current youth board members, Ketchikan Youth Initiative has always, you know, tried to give the youth a voice in our community. During the COVID pandemic, our plan had been in January to have a community meeting to, as we're revitalizing Ketchikan Youth Initiative's goals and values moving forward with the youth center being our hub to provide resources to the youth in our community. Our plan was to then, in March, to have a community meeting. Due to the COVID pandemic, those plans became strategically very difficult as we all negotiated how, you know, how to operate in a COVID-safe world. And so, in that, I just want to offer to the City Council members that the youth of Ketchikan have had use of their building. Yeah, the youth, you know, what I hear from my youth leaders on the KYI board is that they're excited, you know, and their friends wanna know when the youth center will be reopening. We would like to offer a win-win strategy to the City Council members to consider moving forward as KYI would like to, you know, as we can best serve our community. If our building can be, something that can be used as a temporary homeless shelter, then we would welcome the idea for a three-year period, at which time KYI will continue to work on much-needed youth programming in this time of the COVID pandemic. I'm now a registered nurse, thanks to the many opportunities and mentorship that I was gifted to get to have through Ketchikan Youth Initiative in my childhood. And now, as a public servant, I know well that in times of pandemic, if the youth that don't have a voice, and if the youth that are also impacted, KYI has always worked to provide work opportunities for youth entering the workforce. And in the time of work scarcity, food scarcity, and now that schools, you know, to some extent are changing, and obviously extracurricular activities are also becoming less available, I would just like the City Council to please consider our future and our youth and the tenure that it's taken since 2009 in the construction and steps towards completion of the youth center. That building has been designed for and by youth to give them the opportunity to be able, yeah, to, because they reach adulthood and become successful members of our society. KYI would just, KYI would just like to see, you know, our ultimate goal is in partnership and has been in our sustainable design for the building to partner with community organizations with that structure. Currently, I'm leading a disconnected youth survey in partnership with Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. As KYI moves forward and making sure that we're, we are helping our youth in, you know, identifying the need, you know, that they tell us the needs so that we can best be a community-based organization serving them. And so, I would just like to let the City Council know that the youth definitely need their youth center and that whatever we can do to make that a possibility in the future. Tonight, you know, there's some concern that that youth center could become, you know, you know, would maybe not be, you know, ultimately come back to the youth. So, that's, yeah, basically what I have to share, and thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Eltira, now, if the Council has any questions during that item, will you be on the line?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Benjamin Jasper?
Is it just like open right now, or anything? Okay, my name's Benjamin Jasper.
Can you pull the mic up?
Speak into the mic, please.
My name's Benjamin Jasper. I just had, wanted to go over a couple things. I guess mainly would probably be, like with the seafood industry, it's seasonal. Most of the jobs here in town are seasonal. They've estimated our population to be anywhere from 8,000 to 13,000. I mean, it varies all the time. So, part of the reason I wanted to discuss it was the housing market and the homelessness. But it's, I think, a little more involved than just a simple fix. Usually, when there's a large vast amount of money to be made, or that gets thrown at a problem, in most cases, the problem will continue due to the fact that there's money to be made. I think it doesn't, you know, I don't have a college degree or anything like that. I've welded at the shipyard, done flooring, carpentry, all kinds of work my whole life. And I do believe I have a pretty good understanding on the amount of money I make now and the amount of money people made maybe back in the 50s. The mathematics doesn't quite add up. And if you look at something basic like a soda pop, maybe went for five cents, 10 cents, 25 cents, and you look at what the cost of that is now, I think you'll see what I'm talking about. It's anywhere from a dollar to $3.50. Now, they're even selling water for $2. I mean, it's, so I guess basically, if you wanna fix an economical problem, you would have to, it's not just what you're paying somebody based on a base wage. You have to control the housing market, at least minimal, something small. Not, I'm not talking houses, efficiencies, something. This town's in great need of efficiency apartments at a controlled rate, probably based off minimum wage now, probably no more than $500 a month. And that's something that, I mean, we're talking in the thousands. We're missing lots. And it seems like our resource here is being controlled somewhere down in the lower 48s. I don't know why, you know, I mean, it makes sense, I guess. But if you were to look at economics, in my opinion, it would be based on three things. It would be based on proximity, that would be to the resource, the resource itself, and supply and demand. Now, salmon's probably a bad example because we would have what you'd probably call an overabundance, an oversupply. So, that's why we distribute most of our salmon elsewhere. But I still think that there was a, we're not creating the job growth we need here. We always have the excuses Alaskans are here, that we have to ship it. There's a lot of products that can be sent to us, shipped, freighted, that don't necessarily have to be, that don't have a shelf life. We have the ability as human beings to terraform the environment around us. We have the ability as human beings to terraform the environment around us to fit our needs. I noticed during the COVID pandemic that they, they raised the price up from beef, I don't know, what is it, at least three times the amount? I mean, it went from the amount, what, two pounds, used to be 15 bucks, it's up to, like, 35 now. I just thought it might, can I just get a couple more seconds?
Yeah.
If, why, I mean, I don't understand, how come, how, how do we let ourselves get to the point where we're having things shipped from the furthest point to, to the other furthest point? In the past, as you know, always gets passed on to the consumer. Why can't we terraform our environment to, to raise cattle, create job growth, create housing here, efficiency, affordable housing? And it doesn't matter what you put, that, you could raise the minimum wage all you want. It's not going to matter when they const, when they control the housing market. So, it goes hand in hand. But at the same time, you know that almost all of our jobs in this town are seasonal. I mean, it don't matter how much I make for my boss, I make a very, very small amount, not enough to get through the whole season. But with all the resources we have, we can bring that stuff here and create jobs. And my era, it's about change. We get sick of doing the same thing. We're looking for new stuff all the time. That's part of it, you know? But I think the other thing is with, between chickens and cattle, I mean, the amount of stuff we can learn, and the, the, the whole community would be greatly affected, like, costs would go down. And soil is one of the word, we have, like, the worst soil. We could, literally, with the resources we have, between the salmon, sea urchin shells, cow manure, we could make the best soil in the world here. I mean, I mean, it might sound crazy, but it, it's true. That was just the comments that I had, and I wanted to make.
Thank you, Benjamin.
And see if somebody else could look further into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Romanda Simpson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Romanda Simpson. I'm with, I'm the Executive Director of Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. I'm here tonight just to share a few things about what the Coalition is up to, and then I'm going to share some statistics with you about youth in, in Ketchikan. So first, we're really excited, Ketchikan was successful in receiving a state grant for the reentry Coalition, and they work to reduce recidivism by supporting reentrance into our community. We have a brand-new Americor Vista. She's fabulous. She's going to be with us for one year, and she's working on developing a youth coalition and youth programming. Our drug-free communities, they've got a couple different campaigns right now. You'll probably see the "Keep 'Em Safe" sign coming out in front of Madison soon, and that's sending messages, reminding all of us adults to keep our substances locked away, including alcohol, marijuana, prescription drugs, so that our youth that are now at home, for some of them that are doing homeschooling, are kept safe. And they're also partnering with other agencies during the Stop the Stigma event on September 26th. We also have a community cookbook we're very excited about and encourage all of you, including all you guys back there, to submit a recipe that includes a local ingredient. The goal of this cookbook is to show our youth and our children that food is all around us. We are living in an abundant place, and we want to show them and include recipes that they can make themselves. So, get your recipes in for that. And lastly, it is September, which means it is Suicide Awareness Month. What does that mean? I wanted to share some statistics that we just received last week. The YRBS, which is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, was released. This data comes from the survey that was administered to our high school students in March of 2019. So, one thing to note about these statistics I'm about to share is this is pre-COVID. One in four of our high school students in Ketchikan seriously considered suicide within that year. 14% of our Ketchikan high school students attempted suicide. So, when I counted in this room, that means six individuals, if we were all youth, six of us would have attempted suicide. In any given month in Ketchikan, 27% of teens have at least one alcoholic drink, 17% engage in binge drinking, and 17% have used marijuana at least once, and that's within a month Two that are very emotionally affecting to me, 43% of our youth, that's almost half, feel alone in life. And 44% feel like they do not matter to people in their community. So, when I hear that statistic, those statistics, and I see that that's what our youth are feeling pre-COVID, and I think about the impact that this pandemic is having on our youth, I mean, I know what it's having on me as an adult, and I've developed coping skills, I have a very good support system. I, I, I'm positive this is going to increase, which then brings me to my final point. I, I want to ask of you as council members and as mayor, when you're considering the agenda item 76, which is the youth center and the homeless center, regardless of your decision, I, I, I trust in you guys to make a, a decision that you feel is best, but I'm asking council to be a voice for the commitment to our youth in our community, and that you will work to ensure that they know they matter in this community, that they know we want them here and we care about them. So, please, just, when you're considering it, however your decisions are, be strong in your voice of support for our youth and commit to doing an action, whatever that might look like, that supports those youth, so we do not have to continue to have these statistics facing us every single year. Thank you, and I'm open for questions if you'd like.
Any questions? Comment? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Beth Clark and James Johnson.
Good evening. I'm Beth Clark, Executive Director of Community Connections, and I'd like to introduce James Johnson. He is our Quality Assurance Coordinator, and he's taken the lead in the rental and mortgage assistance through the city and the borough. We're here to give you an update on the rental and mortgage assistance program. First, I'd like to start off by just complimenting, you know, we've been partnering with the city and the borough, and I'd just like to say kudos to Carl and Lacey Simpson, Bob Newell and his finance team. They've been really wonderful to work with. So, thank you. The purpose of the rental and mortgage assistance through the CARES was really, the intent was to help people who have been negatively impacted by COVID to be able to stay in their own home. And it was the, the city council and the borough who had the forethought of really setting up this program. I think it's been very successful. As of last week, we've nearly, nearly approved nearly 1,000 households to receive $1,500, both in the city and the borough. And it's just been very impressive. And I've watched these people come into our agency to Community Connections and drop off their applications to James. And it's been really incredible to see many of our community members, many seniors, many very vulnerable people come in and ask for this assistance. So, I, I think it's been very positively, you know, received. But James has some really good stories to share with you, so I'm going to turn it over to James.
Thank you, Beth. Before I get into those stories, I just wanted to give kind of a brief overview on where we currently stand with this project. This was originally intended to be open from June 11th through July 11th. We since extended that to September 11th, or until the funds run out on it. We'd started with 1.5 million on this project. 1 million of that came from the city and 500,000 from the borough. And as Beth just said, with those funds, we've been able to approve nearly 1,000 households with that. 633 of those households were within the Ketchikan city limits, 333 out in the borough. So, funds were exhausted for that program as of last Friday, actually. Applications have continued to come in at a steady rate since then. For those people that have come in since then, I've had to apologize and say funds have ran out. I have been keeping the waitlist up so that I can reach back out to those people if, if funds open or a new program gets underway. At present, we've got about 100 applications that have come in since funds ran out. Of the people approved, the majority have reported an income loss as a result of working reduced hours prior to, to what they were working before COVID-19 pandemic. Other big reasons have been a loss of their regular seasonal employment as a result of notorious being in town this year, or as being laid off as a result of COVID. Once this project ends, we will share a final written report to the council with those statistics. So, like Beth said, I just wanted to, to share a couple stories on how this has positively impacted people. And I've spoken to hundreds of people throughout the course of this project, and, and many have told me what a godsend this has been for them. I've, I've actually had a couple people literally in tears when I've informed them of their approval. So, the community as a whole has been extremely grateful. A number of people have been on the verge of eviction or months behind on being able to pay their mortgage or their rent, and have been totally out of options as to a way to, to pay that. One individual had expressed to me that after being laid off as a result of the pandemic and not being able to find a job, he was making preparations to move into his van, unfortunately. And then he saw the ad in the paper advertising this program. He did apply and was approved for that $1,500, allowing him to stay in his apartment longer and give him a chance to find gainful employment, which is easier in an apartment than a van. So, there was another gentleman who, unfortunately, his wife was moved into a skilled nursing facility recently, so medical bills had really been stacking up for that man, and he was getting pretty desperate on options to pay his monthly mortgage. And this program did provide some financial relief for him and ease that stress just a bit. So, the gratitude really has been overwhelming. I think this program's done a really great job in doing what it's set out to do, and has allowed many to stay in their homes and provided a sigh of relief for the community of Ketchikan. Thank you, and Beth and I are round if there's any questions about this program.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Bob?
Yes.
So, you've literally run through all the funds for the program?
As of last Friday, we have, yep, 1 million city and 500,000 borough.
Okay. And then you have 100 people signed up on a waiting list?
Yeah, and that's just if, if funds are to, and I've informed them that they are on a waitlist. If something opens up, I know we're, we're hoping to get another project underway, and that way I have a list of people I can reach out to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agnes Moran and Donita Odell.
Hi, I'm Donita Odell with First City Homeless Services.
I'm Agnes Moran, and tonight I'm representing First City Homeless Services.
We're just here available if you have any questions for the upcoming agenda item for future discussions on homelessness, as well as any questions about the use of the 632 park for a shelter, and also if you have any questions about the homeless survey that WISH is undertaking in cooperation with other homeless agencies in town.
Thank you.
Deborah Hayden.
I'm Deborah Hayden, Executive Director of Grow Ketchikan. I've spoken to most of you already in person about the program I hope to bring to Ketchikan that will help create new markets for the businesses that have lost their markets. The money that we used to get when people came here has not disappeared, it's just somewhere else. We need to reach out and tap that money and bring it here. And by finding new markets for businesses, that's what we will do. All of these programs that we're using the CARES Act money for are very, very good. It's wonderful that we're creating this stopgap that will tide people over for a while. But it's a consumption program, and the thing about consumption is when it's gone, it's gone. And there isn't any replenishment. This program that I'm proposing to bring will create production and jobs, and the jobs will be here and will be bringing money in from outside. It's the Economic Gardening Program. And so, I'm hoping that you will agree to let me come and give you a formal presentation about this at a future meeting. And that's my, my presentation for tonight. I'll give a more detailed one in the future. I would say that a survey from Southeast Conference shows that the respondents in Ketchikan said that, on average, their revenues were down 67%. I know of several businesses that are suffering even more than that. This is a way to give those businesses new markets, new ways to stand on their own feet. Anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Deborah.
Peter Van Selle or Sale? I'm not sure.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. As you see the gentleman walking off, he's doing a lot of sanitation right now. My name's Peter Van Selle. Hi, everybody, I'm new to town. I have a new business, Cloud Nine Sanitation. So, what Cloud Nine Sanitation is offering is more of a professional sanitation service, something that I see lacking in this city. As we prepare for COVID-19 in the future, we have a large audience who's dependent on cruise ships. I haven't seen really much of an action plan in place after I went into City Hall this afternoon and was told there's a bidding process, in which there's no bidding process available, that it's going to have to wait until 2021. I'm coming today to offer not only my business expertise, my equipment and knowledge and know-how, but I'm also urging you guys to open up the bidding forum for other businesses to potentially help the city have a sanitation operation. I've had a lot of positive feedback so far for this endeavor. My background is in aviation, aviation management, I'm a commercial-rated pilot. As that industry has fallen to mostly bankruptcy, I look for other opportunities. My opportunity with this city is to keep people and their transport vehicles, mainly taxis, under some type of supervision of cleanliness or sanitation for the future cruise lines that will hopefully return. So, for now, my plan is to install over at the car wash and offer some type of discount sanitation for your vehicles. Feel free to come on by, check it out. Call Hazmat 8, 866-HAZMAT8 is my plug, and you'll be seeing some of my signs out there. But as far as urging the council to open up a bidding platform, that's kind of where I stand today. Good evening.
Excuse me? Could I get your name and your number again, please?
Yeah, which number do you need?
The business phone number?
Yes, yes, my name's Peter V.A.N.S.E.L.L., and the contact information for the business is 866, and that's Hazmat 8, it's a vanity number. So... So I hear a lot of things coming up in some of the homelessness. I do donate food quite frequently, so anybody who wants to come up to me, I'd love to work with that coordination soon. Thank you. All right.
Norman Areola.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Severson, our Honorable Vice Mayor, Mr. Judy Zingy, City Council, and staff. Norman Areola resides at 3225 Timberland Court. Heard a lot of good messages brought to you tonight, especially on the homeless issue. It's very unfortunate in this day and age, but it happens. It's not only in Ketchikan, it's nationwide. My thoughts, as people got up here and spoke about it, I thought about the old Ranger barracks out there right across the hospital. It's been sitting empty for now for over 10 years. You can go by at night because it's starting to get darker earlier. You don't see any lights in those bunkhouses, even during the summer months. So my recommendation for city staff is to write a letter to the Alaska delegation and whoever's in charge back in Washington deep, somebody with natural resources, and recommend that we be allowed to use that bunkhouse during the winter months for the homeless. There are separate bunkhouses, rooms and whatnot, and like I said, it's our tax dollars that built that facility and bought all those brand-new vehicles that sit out there all summer long and hadn't moved, the boats that they have, the lawn boats. But that's something to think about. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, everybody has a cell phone, everybody has a computer, and from what I understand, there's people that have tried to contact those that have been elected. For the people, by the people, they don't respond to phone calls, text messages, or email. And I don't know what that's about, but it's a crying shame that when an individual tries to contact, and I'm not going to mention names, you guys know who you are, that don't respond to either text messages or email, and it's embarrassment. But one thing, on one happy note, last month, my electric bill was $700. Of course, that includes everything, internet, TV, home phone, whatever. And this month, well, last month it was 700, but the city paid 400 of that, and I appreciate that. But this month, it's down to 452.29 for the month, so that's a big drop. I was surprised. But starting tomorrow, I've got a contractor coming in to insulate my attic because the Timberland Court, those townhouses are poorly built, cheap, and blow-in insulation doesn't do much. So they're going to completely insulate it with R38. Then I'm going to... I was going to hang sheet rock, but a contractor licensed and bonded recommended using plywood because the moisture that would soften up that sheet rock, so I'm going to go plywood. But again, thank you to the city of Ketchikan for paying my mortgage and my electric last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Carrie Montero.
Yes, this is Altera Loma.
No, I'm sorry, Altera. It was, it says Carrie Montero. Is she? Kara Jurzak? Oh, she's coming, sorry.
Sorry, I was waiting for him to finish cleaning.
Oh.
My name is Cory Montero. I am a KHI graduate from the class of 2019, a college student, and I highly involved youth in Ketchikan initiatives for about eight years. Tonight, I would like to talk about my experience with KHI and provide some insight on why the youth center is very beneficial to our community. I joined KYI when I was in seventh grade. KYI visited my school with a large display of programs they offered, such as the Youth to Work, Paintball, and a duct tape wallet sponsored event at WISH and tie dye. As the artistic 13-year-old I was, tie dye got my attention, and I talked to my best friend to get her involved as well. I remember that day like it was yesterday. I went to Bobby's house to tie dye with my best friend, just the two of us, and three AmeriCorp vistas doing the shirts with us. The next day at the mall for the Fourth of July, we sold the T-shirts as a fundraiser along with other teens from the Paintball leadership team. I eventually joined the Paintball Youth to Work program. I remember a time under the Youth to Work program where Devon Cole invited us to come and shadow a tour guide at the Ketchikan Kayak, excuse me, Ketchikan Kayak Company. It was one of the best experiences I've ever had with KYI, and that's where I met Derek Meister, the current school district psychologist. He was the guide for the tour, and I talked to him about my interests as well as being a school psychologist. From that, I credit Derek for influencing me to go on to school for more education. During high school, I went to compete under my CTA program, Educators Rising, where I went where, for three years, I competed nationally for the Alaska program. Sometimes I just came to the youth center, or just because I wanted to figure out some way to help, or just hang out. I specifically remember working on a business plan for the art shop for youth to create and sell art. We worked out how youth were able to get a commission of the profit from their work and share the sales with the youth center as well. We worked hard to create the opportunities for any youth to come in and create and sell the work, no matter what level of their skills. Opportunities like this allowed us to connect for people to make us feel safe. It doesn't mean that we're strictly focused on the task at hand. We are, but the fact is that we can converse and meet with and meet new friends, tell each other jokes, or just straight goofy with each other. It balances out our life. I used to think that I would not live past the age of 18 because of my own background. I credit the youth center for giving me a reason to live. If it wasn't for the youth center, I would have been partying every weekend, binge drinking, and using drugs. But the fact that I haven't been and I've been sober all my teenage years, I am now currently, and it actually surprises me. This month is National Recovery Month. The youth center sets... I'm sorry. The youth center supports and sets the building blocks for recovery to be possible as teens and then later in their adulthood. It gives me the tools I need to be recovered from my internal illnesses, as I've been diagnosed with generalized anxiety disorder, unspecified mood disorder, as well as depression. I am currently recovered from self-harm and a suicide attempt survivor. I can spend hours and hours talking about the youth center, and I encourage every single one of you, if you want to know more, please reach out to us. Can I finish?
Yes.
Okay. The Teen Center was created as a safe place for at-risk youth, where we provided services to youth who are homeless, low income, and need to get away from unsafe situations, had mental health issues and needed someone to talk to or just support, or needed just to hang out. The reason why I'm speaking today is because a part of that population of at-risk youth in the youth center, sorry, I am part of that population of at-risk youth, and the youth center has served me no matter what my background was. And I know so many other youth who are at risk and the risk. The reason why I'm at risk is because I am Alaskan native, as well as a native Alaskan. I am low income, I've experienced violence in my lifetime and trauma. My parents separated at a young age, and there are times where I didn't feel safe at home, so I went to the youth center. This building has been occupied since day one. Many youth have spent countless hours repairing it for a place for youth. For this place to be gone, to be removed, you are telling many youth of us that you don't care about us or our future, and simply that we don't matter at all. And just to conclude what Ms. Simpson said was that you're adding to the statistics. So I ask for the youth center to be available and just continue to keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kara Jurzak, Acting Public Works Director. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing you to our new building official, Cory Bingham. So we are excited to welcome Cory back to the city of Ketchikan and look forward to getting started and working.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to working with the community and the entire staff. It's been great the last three weeks, and it's going to be wonderful. It's just a better way to... This is the best place for me to work out and through my retirement, that's why I'm here. I enjoy the activities after work also, fishing.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Severson. I'm just here to tell you I am available to answer questions about something that's on your agenda tonight from the safety specialist. From a safety perspective, we think it's time that we step up some of the training that we're doing regarding chemicals and some of those things, so I'm happy to answer those questions. I would also like to comment on some of the things you've heard tonight. Deborah Hayden's presentation about her economic gardening, I've reviewed that proposal. There's some questions, but there's some value there, I think. There's a lot of different paths that each of us as entrepreneurs take to get where we're going, and I think that might be one that might be useful to us, and it could be a minimal cost for us. Secondly, I think that it's important that we, when we talk about the homeless and how we're helping and hoping to make things better, I want us to remember that every path to a home is different for each one of us. So, and I want us to start thinking about how do we prevent homelessness instead of always just trying to figure out how to react and be in the situation? How can we improve the lives of our community so that we don't experience homelessness? But I will also say, and I've said to you all before, we have homeless by choice and we have homeless by chance, right? And so different paths of how they get there will be different paths of how they come out of the situation. So we just have to be mindful about that, I think, and remember that there are different ways for different people. So I'll be around to answer any questions you have later.
Thank you, Renee.
Gabriel Cantfield.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Gabe Cantfield. I am a lifelong resident of Ketchikan. I graduated from KHI, and I'm a current rising senior at Dartmouth College right now, and I'm also a longtime member of the KYI or Ketchikan Youth Initiatives. So that's what I'll be talking about. In December, before the pandemic, I had an idea brought forth to RYC about the resources that youth are offered in Ketchikan regarding youth homelessness and the support systems that are in place for current at-risk youth, with the idea that our youth center could allow to change depending on the town's needs. This idea came to fruition with the support of RYC and KYI shortly after the pandemic landlocked most of us into our homes. We jointly decided on the creation and implementation of a youth at-risk survey to find out the right support systems that we could create from the results of such a survey. This survey comes at the same time that we have heard about the new motion to change hands of ownership for the KYI building, of which was the original location that I had in mind regarding using it as a resource for homeless youth. I want to iterate the importance, especially during the pandemic, that we as residents of Ketchikan have to our community and its youth, and that the cessation of the building during this opportunity we have to instead provide a highly needed space would be regretful. Please consider this in your motion when you're thinking about this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, that's the end of my list.
All right. So that's the end of the list of persons to be heard. Has anybody come in after the list was picked up that wishes to speak to the council tonight? Come on up.
Good to see you all. My name is Christopher Kenny, and I am the Board Treasurer for the Ketchikan Youth Initiative here in town, pardon me. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have regarding the youth center and the facility and what's going on with the Ketchikan Youth Initiative. So if you need me, please ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, it moves us on into the consent agenda. I have one item under New Business, Item 7A4, FY 2022 Community Priority List, to add to that, if there are no objections. Hearing seen none. Do I have a motion?
Moved to consent.
Second. It has moved and been seconded. Is there any discussion? Madam Kirk, would you please read the items?
Approval of minutes of special city council meeting of August 13, 2020, and the regular city council meeting of August 20, 2020, accepting the FY 2019 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant, Number EMW 2019 FF 01673, Resolution Number 202788, amending the 2020 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the fire department in the amount of $32,169, and the harbor department in the amount of $424,786, and authorizing certain budget transfers. Liquor license restaurant designation permit for The Landing Restaurant LLC, DBA, The Landing Hotel Restaurant, and Jeremiah's. And FY 2022 Community Priority List, initial City of Ketchikan Legislative Request.
Are there any questions? Hearing seen none, please call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Chapel?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to six unfinished business. A1 CARES Act Funding Transfer Agreement between the Ketchikan Gateway Borough and the City of Ketchikan. The motion that will be forced that's already on the floor is a motion by Mr. Flora, seconded by Mr. Kiefer. The city council approved the CARES Act Fund Transfer Agreement between the City of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, and authorized the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the city council. So if the modifications to the city CARES Act program recommended by the finance director are acceptable to the city council, there are two motions that are appropriate to be considered. So do I have a motion at this time?
Your Honor, which motion do we need to defeat that motion on the floor?
I think we have to go through both the motions if we agree with the recommendations that are before us.
Would we have to defeat the motion on the floor?
The two recommended motions would just amend because it was just direction. So we would amend the...
These are amendments to the original motion.
To the agreement is what they are. But we can vote on one, two, and then we can vote on the main to incorporate those in there.
Okay, then, Your Honor, I will move... Okay, then, Your Honor, I will move motion number one. I move the city council modify the CARES Act transfer between the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, City of Ketchikan by reducing the city's transfer of CARES Act funding to the borough for small business assistance from $2.80 million to $1.48 million by eliminating the borough's transfer of $1 million to the CARES Act funding to the city for electrical use subsidies.
Second. It's been moved and seconded.
Dick? I really only have one question. Is the borough aware of this, and are they cool with it?
Councilmember Kuz, yes, the borough is aware of this, and they are supportive of this plan as it continues to make them whole. I believe they would like to use the $1 million that they were going to dedicate to the city's utility program, and they'll redirect that into their small business program.
Good. All right. Anybody else? Yes, Dan Lee.
From hearing from the, from Community Connections, is it possible, do we have extra funding, or are we looking at a second round after?
So, Councilmember Gage, what we're currently hoping to do is the $1 million that we're going to direct to the budget for the small business program, we would have that initially to continue this program. We also may have some excess from the nonprofit program once that second round finishes, and then later the second motion that the council needs to consider is how they would like to apportion future CARES Act money, and we are recommending additional funding for the rent and mortgage assistance program. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Sam.
So Bob, it'd be nice to get some of this money towards the rent assistance program right away. If you recall that when this first came out, you know, I was looking at the distribution for the businesses. The business took 50% of all the money and went into the business fund. I felt then, and I do now, that that's an inappropriate amount of money for that, you know? There's been a lot of comments that this money should be put toward things that help a lot of other people. I think that there's a lot of people that are in need of food, shelter, utility assistance. I think that that's a higher and more urgent need than the business. So I would, I would support not putting anything toward the business and put it all towards those needs. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing and hearing none, would please call the roll on the recommended motion number, amendment number one.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Chapel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the recommended amendment motion number two. Do I have a motion, please?
Yeah, Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the city council to direct the city manager and finance director to take such actions as may be necessary to revise the city's current CARES Act programs as recommended by the finance director's report dated August 25th, 2020.
Second.
Moving second. Lacey, would you explain where we're at with that?
So Mayor Severson, I may need to call on Finance Director Bob Newell, but the essence of the second round of programming, it would be primarily directed to the rent and mortgage assistance program. We are also recommending that for the third tranche of CARES Act funding, we hold back a portion of that to dedicate to first responders, which will help sort of offset our revenue losses. We have a number of other ideas that we presented to the council for your consideration, but we are hoping in an effort to expedite the money into the community and also find places where it's needed most to dedicate the bulk of those funds in the second round to the rent and mortgage assistance program. So Bob, I don't know if you, Bob Newell, I don't know if you want to add anything further
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is the reason why we select the residential rent and mortgage program. It was our impression that that program was really very, very successful, and it seemed to be helping the community. And we just heard some testimony tonight that that appeared to be the case, so we would really like to move forward with that, with that program. We think we can get the funds out quickly, and we can get it to the point where we can spend most of our CARES Act money.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions? Judy, and then Sam.
I'd just like to thank the staff. I mean, we tasked you to go out there and find a way to get rid of the money. Obviously, there's a need out there, and you've worked to fulfill our wishes, and I just want to, and the wishes of the community, to help them, and I thank you very much for the effort.
Thank you. Sam?
Thank you, Bob. So we can make motions at this point, right, Bob?
You can amend that particular motion if you'd like, right?
Yeah. I don't have a motion prepared, but I'd like to get some funds for, towards the rental assistance program. I mean, to, for carryover money till the next round comes in, you know, to meet the urgent need that's out there now. So I wouldn't really know where to take that money from, other than the business program. So I think I move that we take an additional $200,000 from the business grant program and put it toward the rental assistance program.
So at this particular point, I think that we are moving about a million bucks, is that right, Lacey?
Yes, the money that we were going to send to the borough, which was about $2.48 million, we're recommending reducing that by a million dollars, so only sending $1.48 million to the borough. So we have an immediate $1 million that we can dedicate to the rent and mortgage assistance program.
And that's what we're gonna do with it?
Yeah.
That's our recommendation.
I'm happy.
Do you withdraw your motion?
I definitely do, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to add, in case it wasn't clear, that we would like to terminate the electric utility subsidy program as well. So there will be money in that as well that we can dedicate to rent and mortgage assistance.
All right. Yes, Sam?
Thanks, Lacey. So I guess the utility assistance program was not successful and not utilized, or?
Councilmember Bergeron, I would say that it was not necessarily successful. We still continue to have concerns that the use of those monies in that way may be construed as backfilling lost revenues as a result of COVID, since we own the utility. And it seems that there's a higher need in the rent and mortgage assistance arena, which will free up people's income to dedicate toward utility payments. And Mr. Newell, I don't know if you have anything more you'd like to add there?
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, what I wanted to do was, as you mentioned, if you're looking for a program where you could transfer some excess funds from, you may want to take a look at the Mory subsidy program. Right now, there's about $250,000 left in that program. I don't think we're gonna spend $250,000. There'd probably be at least about $100,000 we could move to some other program from the Mory subsidy program.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate that. So we're seeing a lot of need for assistance with the rental and assistance program, and I don't think that if we put all the money in there that it would meet all of the needs. So that's kind of the point that I was making tonight. And so I would hope that if we have any excess funds from unspent things, that we can just give staff the direction to just get those things over and, you know, just manage the money that we have in a manner that the council would approve of. I think if we had that kind of direction toward management, that that would be helpful and beneficial to the community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Couple of comments, if you, everybody except the audience can see this, but on page 116 of our agenda here, there's a summary that shows the status of those programs that were mentioned by staff that's expiring or continuing. And the new round of rent and mortgage, they call it Round Two, has got, looks like an estimated cost of, I don't know, it's gonna be five and a half million or 4.8 million. It seems like a lot of money. I know we've already spent apparently a million and a half roughly, according to what we heard, so I think there's probably some places we could tweak some things, but some of this is not real sharp and clear, and I think we've got to have some more timely updates so that if we get into a jam with some money laying there, we've got to deal with it. And I would say one other comment is that I'm concerned about getting money out to people more than I am offsetting our reserves. So that's my comments.
Thank you. I think that the balancing of the funds between the different programs is going to be fairly fluid, because as we go into a later part of this year, such things as heating oil, and then with the fishing fleet returning after a dismal fishing season this year, there's probably going to be some demand in there, and I don't think that mortgage comes due until a little bit later. So again, I think that if we're able to stay fluid and keep updated, that we can keep moving funds to match the needs the best possible way we can. So I think that's the plan.
Your Honor, I've just got a comment.
Yeah.
So in addition to thanking staff for all the work, I just also want to say thank you to the community partners who have taken this on and really helped get this out to the community. We could not have done it without you guys, so thank you for your willingness to partner with us. Thank you very much, getting it into the hands and where it needs to be. I appreciate it.
Samuel?
Thanks, Bob. Last comment. I would just like to thank Councilmember Kuz for his comment about his lack of concern for the city's reserves versus the needs of the people out there. I would like to echo that and thank him for that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Your Honor?
Yes.
One more? Oh, go ahead.
Yes. Go ahead.
I have a question for the, for Lacey. So I see city COVID expenses, $3 million plus. Doesn't say round three. I'm guessing that's the round three money? Is that the entirety of the round three money?
That would be the bulk of round three, yes. I think round three is 3.1, or I think it's about that, yeah.
I understand that we're a ways from round three, but I'm just gonna put this comment out there now, that now that we're moving money more rapidly into the community, and way to go, I think I'm gonna want to have a little bit further discussion on some of the round three to see if there may be some other relevant uses beyond just the city side, which I'm not saying isn't important, but I'm not sure I'm ready to dedicate the entire, the entirety of the last go-around to the city.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah.
Yeah, one last question. We're under the suggested for, oh, heating fuel assistance. There's a suggested amount of $2.5 million. Where is that at on page 116 where we're showing the summary?
So Councilmember Kuz, that was a suggestion that we made that is not included in that summary. It certainly could be, if that's the will of the council, that's something that we can explore. It would certainly be a needed program. I believe our concern with that one is some of the complexity in actually administering that program, because it will require us to work with a number of third-party vendors that we currently don't have relationships with. So it might not be the most expeditious way to get money out into the community if you're looking to do something immediately. And if I could just comment on what Councilmember Flora said regarding the second and third rounds, what we've outlined in this plan is merely that. It's a, it's a plan and a recommendation. We do not have the second or third rounds of money yet, and when we do, we'll have to come back to the council for resolutions and accepting those monies and how to apportion them. So this is merely, you know, outlining a roadmap that we would like to take, and obviously we can change that if the council would like to do that as time goes on.
Dan Lee, and then Dick.
To answer probably Lacey's question about maybe the heating assistance, because, and I'm gonna throw Community Connections under the bus, but some of the organizations that have been helping us, and they, thank you, already have a lot of these programs already in place, so once again, it might be worth having that conversation. I know KIC has a heating plan right now, applications online. They also have a mortgage assistance application online. Clinchitida just came out with one that it doesn't matter where you live. It's, I believe, a $500 if you need help, is different things. It might also be worth conversation about with kids at home, doing school from home, help with the internet. I know that because we own the utility, I'm wondering if there's a way, maybe the borough, we could, the borough could issue that? I don't know. But again, people having to have internet who may not normally have internet or afford internet. I do know that KIC has a six, I think it's six months internet application that's open to the community within that group, but that might be something we take on for some of our non-members, so.
Dick?
Yeah, I appreciate Lacey's answer. My question, my, I was trying to figure out where it was in that summary chart, and it's not there, even though it's recommended up here. It's not in the recommended side, so there's conflicting things going on for me. Thank you.
So if we're talking about these housing grants, if we have other agencies in the community also providing housing grants through CARES Act funds that were administered for their department, is there a way that we're tracking that we're not double-dipping? Are we cross-referencing with those individual groups?
We're not entirely, but what we do have on all of our applications is, Mayor Severson, the applicant has to attest that they are not using the city's CARES Act funds for the same expense in which they received federal funding, other federal funding for. So we're not able at this point to cross-reference. That's another aspect that would more than likely slow the process down, but we are asking for certification that the money that they're receiving from the city is the only federal funding that they're receiving for that expense.
Well, I don't know if there's a way that we can reach out to the other agencies that are providing rent assistance, mortgage assistance, and see if there's a way that we could have a master's list. I don't, I don't know if that's possible or not, but I'm just concerned that there are maybe incidents where we're doubling up.
You know, anything is possible if you want to spend the time and money to do it, but I think it would be very challenging to be able to do that accurately and quickly in order to get the funds out. So that's why we're relying on the applicants to, you know, certify if those funds are not being used to pay expenses that have already been paid by other grants. And looking at some of the other applications that we see other entities using, they are also using similar language, simply just because it's very challenging to try and get that verification any other way.
Thank you, Bob. So we have the motion on the floor. We've had discussion. Seeing no more, Madam Kirk, would you please call the roll on the amendment number two?
Chapel?
Chapel?
Is this on amendment number two?
Yes.
Recommended motion.
Recommended motion number two.
Number two, okay. Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
So that takes us back to the original motion with the two added amendments in. So at this particular time, Madam Kirk, would you call roll on the original motion?
On the main motion?
Yeah.
Gage?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Aye.
Chapel?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to item seven, New Business, 7A1, Ongoing Review and Discussion of Cruise Related Issues. Councilmember Bergeron.
I do not have anything for this agenda item tonight, Your Honor.
So in regards to the cruise issue, there was a teleconference with CLIA yesterday in which there were many of the cruise lines involved. They were talking about the recent... They were talking about the recent sailings in Europe. There's one ship with MSC that is moving forward with cruises, and they are very restrictive in the manner that they are testing people and what those people are allowed to do. There are some cruises that have no port stops. They're just, you go out for the cruise, you spend all the time on the boat, and you come back to your own port. But at this time, the cruise industry is still trying to work with CDC to come up with a viable plan to open cruising in the U.S. There is also the ongoing discussion of how the PBSA or the sister act to the Jones Act in regards to the ship having to stop in Canada could affect the seasons here in Alaska and if there's any workarounds for that. So there's our ongoing discussions. They're, they're trying to start up in Europe. I imagine that we'll see some stuff happen in the Caribbean, and then we're going to have ongoing discussions for the Alaska market. And it sounds like they will draft a plan, get it to CDC, and then we'll have an opportunity to review that once it goes public. So that's where we were with that. Is there anything else to add at this point? I think that's about it for cruise industry.
I did hear on the radio today that they're looking at mid-2021 for a widely available COVID-19 vaccine. That's a little late for cruising for, to get things going, but I think that was a good waypoint, at least gives it something to look forward to as far as getting out of this pandemic. So if folks didn't hear that, I did, I heard that on the radio today, and I was really encouraged by that, and I thought I'd pass that along.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moves us on to item 7A2, ongoing review and discussion of the state Alaska COVID-19 health mandates.
Nothing on this one, Your Honor.
At this time, do we have any updates? Abner? Thank you very much. Brings us on to item three, discussion of using CARES Act funds for funding of TSS COVID Clean Taking Care of Business Program. I asked to bring this forward for discussion and the potential use of CARES Act funding to work with this program. So has anybody read the packet or have any questions in regards to, to this particular process? I think it would be important, particularly important for the ability to start up a cruise industry. I think that we have to be in step with whatever the cruise lines are doing because there's the potential for the community to affect the ships as well as the ships to affect the community. And I think the protocols and the type of material or chemicals that we're using, it's important that we provide the training to the people that are using those, so they use them in the correct manner and frequent enough and do the thorough enough job that we can assure the users of that particular service that we're doing the best we can. So does anybody have any comments, suggestions? Do we want to, Renee, could you come up and just give a brief explanation of what we're looking at here?
Thank you, Mayor Severson. The program itself is actually really designed to, as everybody's doing the sanitation and the decon stuff and all of that. What I'm finding is that many of the tour vendors or the business owners are struggling with the training for their employees. How do we, you know, the state has a great COVID-conscious little sticker you put in your window, and it tells you to go CDC and do this and do this and follow all these sites. Business owners are telling me that they, they are having trouble navigating all of that. They need a down and dirty program that, that can work, and they can spend a couple hours educating their people. That's great, except for they don't have any money to pay for it. So the vision of this with some of my customers, some of my clients, was that we would be able to use some of the CARES Act money to put a good foot forward initially. So the cruise lines, when they come looking to come back to Alaska, we can say we, we have educated our people. Not only are they doing the work, but they know about the thing, the products and the things that they're using. They, they know what the rules are. So they'll get a card, they'll get a, like a CPR card, if you will, a card that says they've completed the program. They can do it online, they can do it video conference, we'll have video conference training, and then some availability to interact that way, to answer questions for them. So it's, it's really just getting all of the people, from the waitress to the person who ties up the lines on the, the boat tour, to really get a good understanding of what they're doing and why they're doing it, and making sure that we put our best foot forward.
Well, thank you, Renee. And in this, I asked the staff to look at it and put some numbers together and speak with Renee. So I think it's appropriate to use CARES Act money for this, and the original estimate is that we provide a budget of about $17,000, and that's estimated on 150 initial participants that it costs about $79 apiece. And if the, if the program is successful, there may be need for additional funds, so that, that's kind of, yes, Dick?
Yeah, Mayor, I, this looks like a pretty good program. I think all the employees could use it, probably the business could use it, and it's right now the reasonable cost. Probably my only question is, can we hand this off to staff and be implemented, or do we have to vote on something? Because if it's not a motion, we can't vote on it without going forehand, so how can we get it moving?
I think that if it's using the CARES Act money, we can direct staff to transfer the funds to make the, is available for the program. Would that be correct?
I think we would need to create some sort of an agreement with TSS for administering such a program, and we can put the appropriate language in there for, you know, the amount and of money that we're giving and all of that. So it's something that we would probably need to bring back later if that's the direction of the city council.
If there's four hands, we'll direct staff to, yes, go ahead, Judy.
So this is a training program. It's different than someone going in and sanitizing for you.
Correct.
This is teaching the folks how to use the products, what the MSDSs mean.
Right.
And providing that education to the business.
And that's, that's the kind of training we do every day, all day anyway. So this is just adding a component specifically to this pandemic.
Great. Thank you very much.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to say, I thought this was really creative. You guys saw a need in the community, and you responded to it, and I thought that was really great because it is something, you know, like we're preparing for opening the industry and things like that. We are going to get need to get people trained. But I did have a couple of questions. Would you guys be using the CARES funds to create the curriculum and the program, or is it already in place?
We're building it. Part of the CARES fund, the $17,000, actually helps us get it online so that people would have that online access at their leisure, whether they're doing it at 10 o'clock at night or 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
And then are you going to market it later for profit?
That remains to be seen. It depends on what this agreement looks like and where we go, but it is our product.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Couple of comments. COVID Clean, our training is down and dirty, should be on a T-shirt.
I'll get on that.
So within the requested budget of $17,000, will this help fund any additional jobs or payroll within your company?
It will keep my people employed. Right now, we have everybody on a part-time status. We're only open four days a week and short hours, so it will bring people back up to more hours and keep them going. And the other thing it will do is for the employee who takes this, say you fund John Doe and he has the card, then when he goes to get a job in the spring, he's more employable because he's already had this training and he's ready to go.
Okay, I see. Thank you. And then just one comment, Your Honor. I, I see some value in this, in this program, but I just think we should be aware that if the city enters into an agreement with Ms. Schofield's organization, that we should be aware and have an open mind that we may be approached by other organizations willing to offer value, and I think we owe them just an equal opportunity to present whether or not we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have forehand to direct staff to start the work? We do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us on to item 7A5, discussion regarding future Ketchikan homeless shelter. Councilmember Kifer, he's not here to speak to that this time, so if there's no objections, I'll defer that until his presence.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can, can we talk about that for just a second? I just, I just had something briefly I wanted to bring up about that particular item. And that is, I'll do it.
Go right ahead.
Because it'll take a second. So right next to the, to the old water warehouse is the old Jinx Graham architect place. I think that building has been empty for like, I can't remember the last time that I saw somebody walk in and out of there. I, I think since there's already a homeless presence in that thing, I think it'd be worthwhile to take a look to see who the owner is, see whether, whatever our plan is going forward, that we develop that, buy that, adverse, whatever. It's just worth looking at. That's all I got.
Thank you.
It's, it's the building next to the old water warehouse. It's the one that has that.
Across the deck. It's called Jinx Graham Building, yeah.
Yeah.
So it, as for deferring that, we'll move on to item 7A6, staff to provide Ketchikan Youth Initiatives notice of violation of the terms of the property conveyance at 632 Park Avenue and seek repossession of the property. I believe there's probably a motion, right?
So we have two motions.
Yes. So there are two motions before us.
I'll dive in here, Your Honor.
All right.
Alternative motion number two. I'm with the city council authorized staff to take such action regarding 632 Park Avenue and First City Homeless Services overnight warming shelter for the 2020, 2021 winter season as determined appropriate by the city council. Second.
So is it my understanding we have to do both?
Not necessarily. You could go about it either way. What staff is recommending, Mayor Severson, is to issue notice of violation of the terms of the conveyance to, for that property, which would start a 30-day countdown with the Ketchikan Youth Initiatives to meet certain terms of the agreement. If that's not the direction that you would like to go, the second motion does allow for a more open discussion regarding the disposition of that building.
And I guess, before we get into this, can we have a little bit of an explanation on the property as it exists today, a little bit of an update on, I guess, some of the terms of the agreement in regard to not letting the property gather debt, and, and just, I think, some general discussion about that? Would that be you or Mark?
Mayor Severson, I'd like to call on Mark Hilsen, Public Works Director, to talk a bit about the work that he's done on this project and research on the conveyance.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, actually Acting Ports and Harbors Director, Mark Hilsen. Putting my Public Works hat back on for this agenda item. Really where I'd like to start with this is just by saying that it's an understatement to say that locating an overnight warming center is not easy. I've been involved with that task twice in the last six months or so, thanks to the pandemic. The first time, evaluating locations that resulted in moving the shelter operations and really consolidating the day shelter and the overnight warming shelter into one operation at the REC Center. That was a very informative task that we took on at the EOC. Tonight, you have my memo that summarizes a second effort to relocate the overnight warming center. But that didn't really elaborate too much on why each location was ruled out. Suffice it to say that I could go through each location specifically, but an acceptable location needs to meet certain basic criteria. There could be other criteria, but basically, it needs to be centrally located with close proximity to first responders, health services. It has to have showers and otherwise, and a very open floor plan. So some buildings that were suggested to us that we evaluated fairly closely were, were very cut up into lots of rooms. That, that does not work for a homeless shelter, overnight warming center. I would say that given our circumstances, I believe opening the overnight warming center is our community's most immediate need and therefore must be our top priority. That said, I do agree with the sentiments expressed by the Wellness Coalition's Executive Director, Romanda Simpson, in that this really should not be framed as a choice between prioritizing homelessness or prioritizing youth initiatives. We really need to do both, but one step at a time. In terms of answering your questions, Honorable Mayor, I, I would defer to maybe representatives of KYI to talk about what debt they may have and those sorts of items. I can say that the building was, was never fully renovated. As my memo said, it was, there were improvements made. They did make progress in that effort, but never to the point of actually getting a certificate of occupancy to occupy the entire building. Over the years, it's my understanding, they, they put in a temporary wall, and Public Works worked with them to issue a limited permit of, you know, to occupy just 750, I think it was, square feet on the first floor right at the front of the building, right next to an entrance. So with the addition of the firewall, they, they did use that area. But specific questions about their debt and that sort of thing, I would just refer to them. In terms of the building, there is, there's some work to do. If you were to take the list that KYI has, that's about roughly $120,000 worth of work as estimated by their architect. We did not do a full design of what it would need to be, you know, what work would need to be done to put it in, into a homeless shelter, but we do know we'd have to add some showers on the main level and a kitchenette. Their item of work, KYI's item of work, had a, had more of a full kitchen installed there. And if I could address Councilmember Bergeron's comment about that building, I, I looked at that a little bit, too. I didn't get inside it. I would have liked to. We went as far as finding out who the owner was, and I did look in the windows and talk to some folks about that. We ruled it out, just looking in from the back, just from timing. It looks like it would need quite a lot of work. So unfortunately, something to remodel to that degree really couldn't solve our problem in the short term.
Any questions for Mark? Yes.
Thanks, Mark. So my comment about that building, Mark, was not that we could remodel that thing in the short term. I think the, the concept was more along of a campus for, for the homelessness that we have in, in Ketchikan and doing something to meet that need. I think that's the one thing that COVID-19 has really proven to all of us is that homelessness is really everybody's problem. If we're trying to control this pandemic and we're trying to ameliorate the conditions that would foment spreading of COVID-19, then we need to address that problem. And so it would help that we would take a look at that building as more of a long-term approach, if it could be worked into any kind of a plan. And whatever we And whatever we do tonight, we're going to be more than likely displacing KYI, at least for the short term, and so we need to start thinking about what we're going to do with those folks. It's really hit home for me, you know, the amount of homelessness, the amount of mental illness that we have in Ketchikan. I mean, you know, we all drive back and forth and see the same people that are afflicted with this, day in and day out. Like, you cannot miss it. It's here, it's right in front of us to see it. And, you know, as a, you know, that's one of the hardest things that is somebody that sits in this position to address. So, I think that COVID is a real problem, but it also gives us an opportunity to seriously take a look at that. And, you know, the comment that I made earlier is that we have the homeless shelter there now. That whole area, I think, lends itself to a possible campus in the future. So, that's therein was my comment and the intent behind it. Thank you.
Jan Lee.
So, Mark, if we take over the building, how quickly do you think you would be able to get it renovated for that shelter, considering that we have been in winter since June?
Right, yeah. So, thankfully, all the work is interior, so that's very thankful and fortunate. I won't, I won't, you know, mislead you. It's going to be a real stretch. It's going to be difficult. It's going to be all hands on deck. We're going to have to move very rapidly, and in no large part, it just depends on how the transfer of the building back to city ownership goes.
So, if we, how many people would that sleep?
About 22, I think we had laid out in there.
And then, I understand the debt issue, and if we take this on, like even after, so, and I agree, there needs to be like a hand-in-hand with the youth initiative, but at the same time, this would relieve them of that debt. Am I correct in reading what I read?
Yeah, it would be, it would be my recommendation that since we're, if the council were to acquire, you know, vote to reacquire the building, and if we were successful with that, that we would be using the items of work that those contractors put in that building. So, I feel pretty strongly that they should be made whole. Now, that said, I don't believe that's something that could be funded out of CARES Act funding. It would have to be local funding.
So, I guess the next question would be, we would have to take that out of general fund, or where would that? And what is, what would that number be?
So, I think that number is around 40,000, and I would defer to the finance director as to the appropriate or options available for funding.
There's probably two places where we can take the money from. One would be the Community Development Fund. Sufficient funds in that particular fund that would cover the 40, 45,000. Another possibility would be the Public Works Self-Tax Fund, but that fund is pretty stretched to the limit, so I wouldn't recommend that fund.
Anybody else?
Your honor?
Yes.
Well, I just want to say, 2020 is the year of impossible decisions, I feel like, because once again, we're presented with a decision that's quite hard. And I just want to say to the youth that spoke tonight, thank you guys for coming out, thank you for being vulnerable and speaking to us about your experiences, and you are valued, and we do see you, and you are important to our community. Along those lines, though, I do have some concerns about the immediacy of this need. Already, we've had two of our indigent community members die of exposure, one in the spring and one in the summer, and so death is a very real possibility if we don't have an overnight warming shelter for these folks before winter. So, I think that there's a very pressing need in that regard, and that was something that I guess, you know, as I'm making this decision or, you know, weighing this, that is weighing very heavily on me as well. I second Mr. Hilsen's agreement with Ms. Simpson that, you know, this isn't an either-or situation, and we cannot ignore the statistics that were presented to us tonight, because our children and our youth are struggling, and we do need to direct programs there. Now, is this the exact perfect spot to do it, and is KYI the exact perfect program to pull it off? I don't know. I do have some questions in that regard, and the questions have nothing related to do with the youth who are involved in the program, but more so relating to KYI's ability to finish this project. This building has been in their possession for a decade now, and it is still not complete. So, that does concern me in terms of an ability to, if it remained in their possession, their ability to finish the project and finish it in a way that the youth could use it now and immediately. I believe that there are a lot of other areas where 750 square feet could be used to serve our youth. If we're needing space, I think that's a lot more attainable than a building of this size for a warming shelter, and so that would be something that I would want to look at, is where are alternative spaces of equitable size that could be, you know, utilized for our youth for a similar purpose? Again, impossible decisions. Thank you again to the youth who spoke tonight, and for Mr. Hilsen for all of your efforts in trying to track this down both times. I know that's been quite the feat, so thank you to everybody involved.
Judy.
I echo Emily's thoughts, and also, this is an immediate need, and as I understand it, there is no other place available, whereas with KYI, they can partner perhaps with some of the other organizations in town that I'm sure would be willing to help them in the short term. But all of us here see folks that are homeless, sitting at the bus stop, out in the rain, and it's been a terrible, terrible summer, and we have no place for them to go at all. We don't want them, you know, people don't want them in their businesses, they don't want them on the street, they don't want them back sitting out in the rain. We have to provide something for these folks, and I think that this is the start.
Sam, and then Jan Lee.
So, I'd just like to echo Emily's comments to the folks that came up and spoke tonight. You know, it takes a lot of courage to go up to that lectern and to speak, especially if you have anxiety disorders. And so, I really appreciate the people that came up and talked, and I want you to consider what we're going through as far as a decision goes about what we're going to do with this building, and I want you to put yourself in our position and to understand and ask yourself what you would do. And I think that this council is going to do what you would do. I think that we need to take the building back, I think that we need to fix it up for a homeless shelter, and I also think that we need to consider what we can do for Ketchikan's youth. So, I have a question, and that would be that if we develop this facility, is that going to mean that we're not going to need the rec center again? Is that right, or has that come up in discussion?
We do not at all anticipate going back to the rec center.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did you have something, Jan Lee?
That was me, yeah. I think, I'm curious to know, so in order to move this quick, I'm assuming we have to do alternative motion one. Okay. And again, you know, I hate doing this, it's like pulling my toenails out, but I also know that the need is right now, and I don't know if I can make the motion to do one, or do we have to do two?
We never had a second on the first motion that Sam had presented.
Never did.
Okay, but it doesn't matter, we can do them either one or two.
Okay, because I think that at this point, we need to do this, and I get that people make choices, and, but I also want to remind people that a lot of the people that we see on the streets today, that I've known them most of my life, and they didn't get there overnight, and there's a lot of, lot of stories that, that we could all be there at some point in our lifetime. Doesn't matter how good we are, how bad we are, we could all end up in that situation. And I, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to move the city council authorized staff to provide Ketchikan Youth Initiatives notice of violation of the terms of the property conveyance of 632 Park Avenue and seek repossession of the property.
I think we have a motion on the floor, motion two, is that correct?
Yeah, I can withdraw the motion, your honor.
Yep, you withdraw the motion. Okay, the motion has been removed and seconded, so now your motion is in order and hasn't been seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded on alternative one or motion one. Any more discussion?
Question, your honor?
Mark.
I have a question for Mr. Hilsen. First, just a quick comment to the youth, the audience. We really aren't looking at this as an either-or approach, it's a prioritized approach, and you folks are certainly in the plan, but we need to take this incrementally. The timeframe has to be aggressive, and I'm not even convinced it's attainable right now. So, I see, Mr. Hilsen, you say that there's an additional $220,000 of renovations to complete this.
Correct.
Would that be done by, internally by the city, or would that go out to bid?
We're going to have to involve multiple contractors, not, with the amount of work there and the specialized trades, there's no way that we can do that internally.
So, then there would be bids coming back to this body to be approved?
Very possibly, although we could use our local purchasing ordinance that would allow us to contract up to $50,000 locally, and typically, we get three quotes and do that sort of thing very frequently in order, on smaller slices of work in order to speed up processes. So, I would envision that.
You would use that strategy to work through the two, because I see if there's a 30-day clock, and this is, this is hopeful that KYI decides not to contest or litigate or slow it down. So, best-case scenario, the building would come back to the city in 30 days, remediation would start immediately.
Right.
And any timeframe, projected timeframe on that, you're going to have to line up contractors, do the $50,000 move to cover the $220,000 with multiple guys working, multiple outfits working together. So, you're going to have a lot, you're going to have a lot of sticks and plates going on this.
Yes, that's right.
So, can you, do you have any sort of timeline that you can define for the renovation process, once it's in the city's hands?
Well, one step at a time. I was hoping to get the building in our hands, the sooner the better. We would immediately identify areas of work that can be done immediately, get a schedule together, coordinate all that. It's just really hard for me to pin a date on that.
It sounds like an impossible task.
It's as fast as possible.
The reason I'm asking, Mark, is I'm not trying to pin you down or obligate you or your staff, but to Councilmember Chapel's comments, we've already had two people pass away, and the weather hasn't gotten bad yet. If we're going to move forward on this, and it's not going to be done until February, we haven't, we haven't accomplished what we're trying, what we're trying to do.
Right, I see your, I see your point.
That's all, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Yeah, I could tell you it won't be, it won't be February unless we don't get possession of the building until January.
It, one last question, your honor. If this were to move forward and it turned out that KYI was amenable, is there a way to accelerate that 30-day clock to three days? Or something like that? Or does it have to be a 30-day repossession?
I believe it does not have to be a 30-day repossession, but I'll defer to the city attorney.
Thank you.
Certainly, KYI could elect not to stand on their rights under the deed restrictions. KYI would certainly have the option of just turning it back over to the city without going through the process, but that would be their decision.
Thank you. Samuel?
Mark, does the harbor master usually run these kind of projects?
I'll defer to the Steve Corporal, the Ports and Harbors Director.
Can we take it out of harbor funds?
That's all I have, your honor.
Just, just out of, you know, full disclosure, I think it's important to understand that this could become a permanent facility for the overnight warming center, and my understanding is that at this particular point in time, they're going to split their operations, they'll still have the day shelter at the Methodist, and Agnes, maybe you can come up and speak to that the best. But I think there's a potential for them wanting to expand to where they could house everything under one roof, and that would mean that at a later date, they would probably like to get possession of the building themselves, and then potentially the deck next to it for expansion of their operations. So, I just wanted to make sure that the council is fully aware that as we move into this process, it's probably going to contain more stuff further down the road. So, Agnes.
Denise and I can do both. Yes, the building as it stands right now is not large enough for us to house both the day shelter and the overnight warming center safely, because of all the cleaning requirements. And so, what we've come up with so far is that we would operate the day shelter from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM in its current location. That way, we could utilize the kitchen facilities, we can feed the people. Then at 8:00 PM, we would send them over to the overnight warming center where they could stay from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. What that does is it puts a little bit more of a burden on us, and we've gone out for grant funds to cover that additional cost. We should hear in a week or so if we were successful with that. But what that does is it gives us the 24-hour coverage that we've been lacking. We no longer will have that four-hour gap in the evening where we just kind of send them out to the streets until we can reopen the overnight warming center. But the downside to that is you're doubling your expenses almost, because you have to have additional staff, you're supporting two locations, you've got more utilities, you've got more supplies, it just makes it not a long-term solution. If you guys go forward tonight and take the building back, we are committed to trying to find funding to expand it so that we can consolidate into one location. One of the reasons we can't do that, the three-year plan, is because most of the grant funding that we've been looking at, that would allow us to do some level of renovation, has a pretty stringent time requirement, and it kind of scales from a nine-year to a 15-year commitment, depending on how, what percentage of a renovation you're projecting or you're proposing. And so, to put all the time and effort into it and try to locate those funds and be booted out of there in three years just would, would not be feasible for us. And we have looked to the city, we've been, the city, but we've also looked to the borough, to, we're planning on going into their grant program. And to speak to Mr. Bergeron's comments about having a plan, I'll put my WISH hat on, and WISH is commencing a comprehensive homeless survey to see how COVID has impacted our homeless population. We're doing it in partnership with First City Homeless Services, PATH, Love and Action, SAIL, KIC, and we're right now formulating the questions. We'll be going out probably the 15th for a pretty comprehensive, hit the ground, every encampment we can find, and we're doing that sort of a survey. We'll compile it, and we'll have it available to be a community resource by December 30th. So, we're working this on many levels.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, Agnes. Thank you. So, Lacey, would this building then become a city-owned asset and be added to a maintenance issue for our building division?
Are you talking about once it returns to the city? Yes, yes, it would.
And at a budget accordingly, correct?
Yes. Something that we had not been thinking of until this. Something that we had not been thinking of until this moment.
But given, given that we have to write up some kind of agreement in order to move the, the shelter in there, would there be similar things where we're taking care of structural and outside, and anything else inside would be done? I think we'd have to structure it some manner like that.
I think those aspects of an agreement with First City Homeless Services remains to be seen. I think we can have those discussions as to who will be responsible for which aspects of the building, maintenance and upkeep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, Mark?
One last question, wouldn't the long-term goal be to convey it to the warming center?
So Councilmember Flora, perhaps yes, and, and what that means, it could be a conveyance similar to what we did with Ketchikan Youth Initiatives, it could be a lease, it could be some other type of agreement. Again, since we're just starting this discussion, we really haven't thought that far. We're just concentrating on the immediate need, but certainly that's something that we'll need to think about.
So we have a motion before us, it's been seconded, we've had discussion, is there any more? Hearing none, would you please call the roll on option one?
Aye.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Chapel?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
So Lacey, that should satisfy the need for tonight, is that correct?
I believe so, I think we have direction, and we will begin the process of serving the notice to Ketchikan Youth Initiatives.
Thank you very much. So that brings us on to vouchers, approval of vouchers, Port and Harbor's book, $65.95, 96 cents. Yes?
I moved for approval of vouchers to Port and Harbor's books and the amount of
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
We should pay it immediately.
Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Kuz?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Chapel?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Bergeron?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Brings us to the manager's report. Lacey?
I have a number of items, Your Honor. As the city council is aware, staff had been scheduling a special city council meeting for next week, September 10th, for the council to begin its final review of the Port RFP proposals that we have received. After further consideration and consultation with the mayor, staff is recommending that we postpone that meeting until later in the month after we have received the best and final offers from the two proponents that we have solicited, which are due on September 8th. We're hoping that once we have those in hand, those can be incorporated into the financial analysis that Piper Sandler is preparing on the city's behalf. So I would like to recommend either September 22nd or 23rd for that meeting to be rescheduled to, if the council has any preference.
I have no objections at this time. Go ahead.
I've got a comment.
Yes.
I don't know why you decided to do this between the staff and the mayor, but I need some justification. I mean, I, I've heard something about our contractor that's going to analyze this, can't get it all done. Well, what's he been doing for the last two months? He's had him for six months now, and he shouldn't be, but it takes a little tweak to tweak it.
So Councilmember Kuz, we, we have the bulk of that financial analysis. We suspect that once the best and final offers are received from the two proponents, the value that Piper Sandler is assigning to each proponent is going to shift dramatically. So we need additional time. I feel that if the council met next Thursday, it would be frankly a wasted effort because it would not fully incorporate all of the information that you have at your disposal at that time. So that's my recommendation. Certainly, if the council would like to meet on Thursday, we can do that, but I think you would probably have repeat conversations at a future meeting once the best and final offers are incorporated into that financial analysis.
I probably personally disagree that the guy couldn't put that information into that within the next two days to get it to us, because we've sat around with this now for as long as we have. We may not make a decision, but I think we need to keep this moving forward because the public, they have one side of the story, they don't have the other side of the story. And the other one, other thing I'm worried about is we've talked about having three proposals. One's the two people from outside the city. Does the city have the capability to even put up a competitive proposal? And are we going to have one?
Are you asking about the quote, "no action" alternative?
It's not a "no action" alternative to me. It's, the city's got to be competitive, or we're not doing the city folks justice. So, yes, probably the "no action" alternative, but it's really no action. It means we have to be prepared for the next 20 years in our business plan to do what they would be doing so that we get what we need out of it, too.
Councilmember Kuz, we are preparing our own financial analysis that essentially holds status quo, and Bob Newell, I don't know if you would like to talk a bit about that since our finance director is doing that analysis.
Yes, we are working on it, and actually, we finished the draft today, and we're going to ask Piper Sandler to take a look at it, just to make sure that we haven't missed anything, and we are using the same basis so that we can actually do a, an apple-to-apple comparison. So that is, that, that's basically done at this point.
So I, I have a quick question, can I jump in there, Bob?
Go ahead, Sam.
Thanks. So is Piper, is, is our financial analysis going to look at our plan and for the validity and the effort that we put forward? So I, I think I'm getting where Mr. Kuz is coming from here. So we want to see the, yeah, we want to continue to run a plan, not just, yeah, you know, this is what it would look like if we just kept going. So I want you to know that I'm going to be looking for that, and so, and I think others on the council will as well.
Thank you. Go ahead, Janley.
Is it not possible that that couldn't be done the following week, on the 15th or the 16th, instead of pushing it out to the 22nd, 23rd?
Again, Councilmember Gage, I have concerns that once the proposals are given to Piper Sandler, which would be the ninth, the council likely would not have that financial analysis until the day they meet, if you are wanting to have a meeting on the 15th. So we're trying to give, if you're suggesting having a meeting on the 15th, we want to give Piper Sandler some time to have that analysis given to staff that we can then pass to you in advance before you step into that meeting.
So I guess rather instead of date, Lacey, I would like to get that information on to them, and as quick as they can turn it around effectively, then we could, I think we'd need, what, three days' notice to put a special meeting together? And, and we could, we could get that done at our earliest convenience that way, without setting a, a real date, so. And that would give us time to look at it, and then we could figure that out.
We can do that, so then at the meeting of September 17th, the council would discuss when they would like to have a special meeting?
That would work.
Okay.
Fair enough. Dick?
Yeah, if we're saying we wait till the September 17th, is that enough time for us to say it's okay on the 22nd, technically or legally?
We may have the information back before that, is what we're saying. Yeah, Janley?
Could we not request that they have it by, and have a special meeting on the 15th, 16th with this information? It seems kind of absurd that we have to wait three weeks. I, I don't, you know, I mean, I'm not an analyst, but you know.
My, my plan, my plan is as soon as they turn it around and get it back to us, we will get the plans to the council, and we'll have a meeting at our earliest convenience to get that discussed.
But that doesn't give them a deadline.
They need a deadline, we're paying them.
So I guess my question is, they don't, Piper Sandler have nothing from us yet on any of the offers?
No, they, they, they have, so, they have seen the original proposals, that is what they are analyzing. They do not have the information for the best and final offers because the city has not received those yet. We will receive those on the 8th, so.
But are they, are we thinking that those are going to change drastically?
I anticipate so.
And then we still have to put the city's.
And then that will also, yes.
Into that mix also.
Oh, so they don't have the, I mean, we've.
They don't have ours yet.
Can I ask one more? Like, we were all working them, weren't we, at the same time, or?
Sorry, Councilmember Zangy, what was your question?
Well, do they not have how our proposal, our no-action proposal?
They are looking at that currently, but let the finance director speak to that.
We're putting that together. They're not actually going to do it, they're just going to review it for us, and that's not going to take very long for them to do the review.
Okay, so we don't have ours done yet, as far as you say?
Ours is done, the draft is done. We'll be shipping it to Piper Sandler tomorrow.
All right.
For a review.
Thank you.
So at the meeting of the 17th, you'll discuss the date of the special meeting, is that, okay?
And, and you can let us know, and as soon as convenience, get the prepared documents out to the council for review.
I will do that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would, I would strongly urge you to, we need at least a few ads in the paper, so from the 17th, I mean, I can get one out on the 18th, probably for Saturday, and the day, if you guys chose the 22nd, but, or.
Well, we'll work with the manager's office, and as soon as they, we have the stuff in hand.
We could have it all prepped up and ready to, and we can even send it over to the paper except for the, the date, so they can put a space available for us.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I would also request that the council gets to see what Bob has done, as soon as when it goes down there. I mean, we've got access to two RFP, two replies, so why can't we see ours?
So, yeah, I think, can we get a copy of the draft?
Sorry, say that again.
Can we get a copy of the draft of the city's plan?
Sure, yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Knowing full well that Piper Sandler has not reviewed it yet.
Yep, yep, we understand that. Thank you.
So Councilmember Severson, or Mayor Severson, I have a few more, few more items, if I may. Thank you. As was mentioned tonight, but I just wanted to again point out that we have appointed Mark Hilson to be acting Port and Harbor's director as our longtime Port and Harbor's director, Steve Corporon transitions out of, out of that position. And similarly, Kara Gerzak, our Assistant Public Works Director, is now assuming the position of Acting Public Works Director, so we're very thankful that both of these folks have stepped up. I think they will make great contributions in these new roles. I'd also just like to point out, one of the manager report items, we are planning on resuming parking enforcement, starting October 5th. If there are no objections or comments from the council, we would like to do that and start with a warning citation period. I would also like to point out that Michelle Johansson, our controller, has now accepted the position to be the incoming finance director beginning December 1st, when our longtime finance director, Bob Newell, retires. So we are, again, very fortunate to have Michelle step into that role. And the last thing I wanted to mention tonight, which is a pretty big deal, I'm happy to announce that the subsea fiber optic cable that we have been laying for the last several weeks, extending from Prince Rupert to Ketchikan, has now made it shore. Tomorrow, we will be doing some testing on it, and I have a little show-and-tell item for all of you, if you want to come check it out at some point. We have a piece of our cable, so this is a, I can't express how excited I am for this project. This represents just a huge achievement for not only the utility, but for Ketchikan as a community. This really is skyrocketing us into the next frontier of telecommunications. So again, I'd just really like to thank the community for their support of this project, but certainly our telecommunications division, our manager, Ed Cushing, and also Dan Lindgren have put a ton of time into this and had the opportunity to interact with some of our contractors today, and they were really top shelf. I was really impressed with the work that they did, so, work on our way. That's it.
Don't let that cable fool you. All of it's gift-wrapping, the fibers are smaller than the top part of this pen.
Can I get that turned into a cane?
Thank you, Lacey, is that it?
That is it.
Thank you very much. City clerks file?
None, Your Honor.
City attorneys file?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I would like to add a future agenda item for Ms. Hayden to come back and give us a more formal presentation on economic gardening.
Who's that?
Ms. Deborah Hayden, the economic gardening concept.
Okay, we can work with the agendas and figure out where we can do that. Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
Bob?
Yes.
So I, I think part of what Ms. Hayden is, is looking to do is, is get some funding as a part of that. I did have a chance to go over some of the material that she had passed around, and it does seem to have merit, and it may, the council may want to attribute or allocate some CARES Act funds toward that. So I just want to make sure that when this comes up, that it's part of the consideration.
Councilmember Bergeron, the finance director and I did talk a bit about this proposal, we did review it briefly. We do have some concerns about its eligibility for CARES Act money. We're also unclear of the costs. Some of these things might come more clear if, if Ms. Hayden does give her proposal, but we are, we're not entirely sure what the connection may be with public health emergency for it to be qualifier for CARES Act funding. We also have some questions regarding its suitability for a community like Ketchikan. So perhaps, certainly if the council would like to hear a presentation from Ms. Hayden, we can do that. I can also follow up with her with more specific questions that might better indicate if the council did want to move forward with funding the program, how we could do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us on to mayor and council comments. Dick?
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd just like to thank all the folks that came out tonight. I think the youth initiative folks have left, but thank them for coming out, expressing concern, and other than that, I think we're done.
Janley?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I, you know, you're between a rock and a hard place, but I think the next step after we work on the homeless is looking at what we can do for the initiative. And sometimes you got to make the hard choices, and that was a tough one. Other than that, I, I'm glad we're going to be hooked up to the internet. I know that in a lot of the communities throughout Southeast, it's one of the biggest hurdles right now with kids being online for school and being bumped off during Zoom because dad's on the internet for work, and so they're, they're juggling, and so this is going to really benefit us in that aspect, so, cool. I'm done.
Sam?
Thank you. I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Cushing and his department for pulling off such an amazing, amazing project. You know, I flippantly said to Ed one time that global domination is our business plan. Well, you know what? We have ourselves an unlimited tube for, for internet capacity, and, you know, we are no longer over the barrel to anyone for bandwidth. When we did that as an entity, we should be really proud of ourselves as, as, as an entity, as a community, and as a council, and I'm, I'm just beside myself. I'm really proud of everybody, I'm proud to be a part of this super professional organization. And the other thing I want to say is that, you know, people come and people go. We're now sitting in a little bit different seats, and we're doing great, you know? So I'm, I just want to say that I, you know, I was kind of giving you a hard time for, for being the Ports and Harbors Director, yet doing the, the other stuff, but people come and people go, but nobody's indispensable, and we're all, we're a great organization, and part of a great organization is setting yourself up for success after you go and after people come and go. And I think we're ready for that. I think we're ready for, for people to, to step up, and you're doing a good job, and thanks for everything, that's all I got.
Emily?
Yeah, we do have some bad A department heads. Thanks, you guys, you're awesome.
Judy?
I want to thank Ed Cushing, I believe it was seven years ago that I joined the council, and he took me on a tour of his facility, and at the time, I thought, I don't understand a bloody thing he's saying. But through every session and every council meeting, it got a little easier, and now I understand your vision, and I thank you for that.
Mark?
Hats off to KPU Telecom, Mr. Cushing. This is next-level forward-thinking, and as our economy evolves and recovers, we now have one new significant tool in our toolbox to move forward as we look to recover from this pandemic and to diversify. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, I've got a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to thank Senator Sullivan's office. We've been having conversations about our limited alternative filtration, and we felt that it got hung up a little bit. And so when he was here on an earlier meeting, we talked to him about what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it, and the tremendous impact it could have on the community as we move through this. And to his credit, he said, well, I'll get you meetings with the people that we need to talk to. And it was a few weeks later that we were able to sit down with EPA in Washington, from Washington, D.C., with Senator Sullivan on the line to discuss those issues. And I thought they went very well, very well. So I'd like to thank him for that. And then, just the other day, I had the opportunity to sit down and talk with the Secretary of Navy. Senator Sullivan, through the confirmation hearings, invited him to Alaska, and he is in Alaska looking at Alaska resources in regards to expanding the footprint of the Navy. And I just wanted to make sure that he knew where Ketchikan was at and that we're willing to work, and if there's something that we can do in regards to building, supplying, providing for the Navy, that we're open for that discussion. So that was a great opportunity for us. And then, as we talk about, I was out at the site today for the, where the cable landed, and extraordinary project for us. We are now, as Ed would say, in the driver's seat, someplace we've never been before. And it will give us a future, and we'll be in control of that future, which I think is fantastic. So one of the speakers tonight talked about the port and the RFPs and the city maintaining those ports. And so as we go through these conversations, this council, along with our administration and our department heads and our fine workers at Telecom, have shown that we can manage some very complex business. And we, we have the right people in the right place, and we need to consider that as we move in forward. So again, I'd like to thank Mr. Cushing, but he has a whole bench of people that provided information, input, you know, the rolling out of the fiber to the home network, the crews out there to get that stuff in place and up and running. It's been an amazing ride from when we sat down in the council chambers after we decided we weren't selling the telephone utility, so therefore we were investing and making it better. And we are on the cutting edge. There are so many communities in the U.S. right now that would truly like to have the same resources that we do in regard to what we're doing with KPU and broadband, and high-speed broadband. So we do have a future ahead of us, and it's going to be fun to see how that turns out. So with that, I have nothing else. You do have some few things in there and reports and stuff, but other than that, I think that concludes our business for tonight. So do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn. Go Navy, Your Honor.